I'm sorry, I had this highlighted before. Okay, President Johnson, would you be amendable to us coming back to the minutes later on? I just don't want to, there were two key corrections that I really want to make sure we get on the record, considering the very sensitive conversation that we were having around the travel policy. And I'm sorry, I just can't find those right now.
Do you want to come back before we approve it?
Yes.
Do you have some amendments or something?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Sierra stated we'll come back for the approval of amendments and find the issue at hand. Okay, is there any citizens here request to address the board? Any citizens? Anybody online here? Okay. Staff reports, executive director?
Good evening, everybody. I'm actually gonna turn the microphone over to Scott Loftus to introduce one of our new staff members.
Evening, I just want to go ahead and introduce our, oh, sorry, this. Sorry. I'd like to go ahead and introduce our new Riverplex General Manager, Courtney Johnson. Courtney, if you want to come up and just say a few things. Courtney's first day was last Monday, June 30th, and so she's been doing great trying to learn in everything about the Fitness Center.
Hi, can you hear me okay? Okay, I prefer to project, but microphones are all right. You all look nice tonight. My name's Courtney Johnson, so as Scott said, I'm brand new. I started last Monday. I'm a Peoria native. I'm in schools from kindergarten, graduated from Richwoods. My family is educators in the Peoria Public Schools. I got my degrees from Western and I'm happy to be here, grateful to be here, looking forward to serving the community, our members at the Riverplex and joining this family and getting to know you all and seeing what we can accomplish together. That's it.
You liked your last name.
Thank you.
Good, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome to our Park District. And we look forward to working with you.
Welcome, Courtney.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, Becky, Superintendent Plante?
Our monthly report is before you. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try and answer them. I would like to highlight the ribbon cutting for the Lakeview Splash Pad, which is gonna be July 22nd at 10:30 a.m. So if you guys are available, that would be great.
President Johnson, I do have one question. Becky, I don't see it on the report. I've visited the Gwinna Aquatic Center and saw that there was some construction or something with the pool. I don't really know what's going on. Can you talk to us about what's going on with the pool? I saw that the slide area was closed off and maybe some other areas of the pool.
Yeah, it was temporarily closed off due to cloudiness of the water, but that's been cured.
Got it. And what caused the cloudiness?
Issue with the filtration system.
Got it, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Any other questions of our superintendent? Any committee reports? Okay, police fund over reserve reallocation?
Good evening, Board. In October of 2023, Park Board Trustees approved for $500,000 of Park Police Fund over reserve to be allocated for a number of capital expenses. To date, most of those capital expenses have been purchased, received, and are being operationalized at the district, with the one exception being the dollars allocated for surveillance cameras. Some of those surveillance cameras have been purchased and installed, but to date, the district was still sitting on over $200,000 of police over reserve fund dollars that were allocated specifically for surveillance cameras. Over recent weeks, with the onset of the busy summer season and conversations around keeping our community and park patrons safe and addressing district security and police issues swiftly and successfully, staff is recommending that $150,000 of that remaining balance of police over reserve budget be reallocated to Park District Police Department capital needs, which include Park District Police Utility Vehicle for Glen Oak Park, Police Utility Vehicle for the Rock Island Greenway and Illinois River Bluff Trails, two enclosed trailers for those police utility vehicles, dash cameras installed in recreation and security vehicles, and two more light trailers. If approved, the remaining balance of police over reserve dollars would be approximately $79,000 to address surveillance camera needs in the future. And district staff can also use future issuance of general obligation bonds, paper, surveillance camera needs and installations.
President Johnson, I do have a question. Do we, any items that are listed for purchase, do we need to purchase though, or approve this tonight in order to purchase those within a timeframe?
No, most of those items would come back to the board for individual approval based on their price point.
So in the event that the board wanted to have more discussion of the over reserves, it'll be fine for us to table this for now?
Yeah. Right.
Got it. Okay, President Johnson, I think if it's okay with the board, I'd like to table this for further discussion and maybe it go back to Finance Committee. Does that need to be a formal motion, Attorney Day?
If we do not discuss that tonight, and we can take, would we be taking action tonight? Are we being asked to take action? We're being asked to authorize the reallocation of that function. If we then proceed to go through our purchasing process, anything that is over that $20,000 threshold within the purchasing phase will still come back to you for approval at that time. And so it's, and the items being in that reallocation are the only items that would be eligible to be purchased?
Correct.
So, again, unless you reallocate those to some other purpose before they're purchased.
What is that discussion?
I'm just trying to get to, for me, having the police have the resources as quickly as possible, to me and thinking about this is probably more important than sending this back to a finance. Because we are all here, we can all discuss it right now. So that's just.
Well, I appreciate, I'm more than happy to have that open dialogue right now. My intent was to respect the conversation that we were having in closed session, but if that's something that we want to entertain now, I would love to.
I think that's why it's up our agenda.
I also have the concern about if time is of the essence in terms of these purchases, are they likely to go up in expense if we delay? We ask you to delay purchasing these utility vehicles and such, it sounds, I've seen where cars might be going up in cost. So if we delay, is the utility vehicle also gonna get more expensive?
Well, we don't know that for sure, given the volatility of that market, they could, especially if we, if discussions kind of delayed purchasing to the next calendar year, then, you know, a lot of times we see price increases with that. But we don't know that for sure.
Well, and your volatility comment, the prices could be even cheaper if we were to wait.
Well, let's, yeah, let's do this. With the conversation coming up in executive session, this might be some changes to this application. You know what I'm saying? There might be, I don't know, discussion that's coming forward. There may be, the board might decide to go a different direction than what's been proposed to us now. That's one thing I was thinking about, if that's possible. We just table it for now and come back before we make the allocation?
I mean, I would like to, but again, if there's.
The board? How you feel? We have to have discussion.
Well, can I ask, if we put this off for two weeks, does it put any procedures or anything that we're working on right now, would it put it behind or?
In the receipt of any of those items, it would just mean a longer delay for that.
So it would be a two-week delay?
Delay in orders than the delay in receipts to go with it. And then I would, I would, this, this president, I would ask, if we could ask our chief, is, there's some critical issues that we would be missing out on if we delayed it. Is there a need for us to do this relatively quick?
Well, I would say we have earmarked the first, the light towers and the UTVs. You know, I wish I had a better predictor, right, but we know we don't have anything now. And so if something happens, we are, we would like to go out and receive solid bids. I think we have for the light towers, but for the UTVs we're looking at and for the trailers. And I mean, it just pushes, it just pushes everything back, right? So it.
After the discussion today, I mean, executive session, we can go wherever, we do a telephone call.
And this president, it sounded like from the things that you've expressed concerns about in the past, that these things fit with what would help put people in the right place at the right time to do something. So maybe, you know, I agree with, you know.
If it'll help in the attorney day, maybe you can, maybe you can help me, but my understanding is the motion on the floor is to authorize the reallocation, not necessarily spend the money, which would allow us then to do the research and get a solid bid on the proper equipment and then bring it back to you, and bring it back to you for review and approval.
Now, I understand what's being asked of us, and so what I'm suggesting is that we do not move to approve this quite yet, because based on the very concerning conversation that's been expressed prior and leading up to this meeting, as President Johnson said, it very may well be that this board come back and say, we want to spend the money in a different way. So in the event that we do approve this, then you all would have to resubmit another one, another recommendation. And so what we're just asking for as a board is, we have the discussion, and it may, it may very well be that at the end of tonight's discussion, we proceed to move forward with this, at which if that is the case, we've done electronic polls before, or we figured out ways to get polls done to actually move forward. And then as it pertains to the, to the delay concern, that's totally valid. We all can agree, there's concern for safety right now. I want to remind individuals that at one point in time, we had similar safety concerns of different nature, but safety nonetheless, when it came to the Children's Playhouse Museum rooftop. And we held off that conversation to figure out how we best wanted to use those funds as a result of the expressed interest of the board to have further dialogue. And we understood the risks that we were taking by delaying that. And so now, just really based on similar practice, but also just out of respect to what folks are asking for, we're just asking for maybe even a few more hours at this point to just have further dialogue.
Yeah.
Mr. President, I could agree with that, as long as we try to do it expeditiously and in the phone call and get it to a point where.
Because they need that equipment, yeah, I get it.
I don't, I don't, you know, I couldn't see anything that, you know, maybe you have something that you want to do specifically, but I couldn't see anything different than what's been recommended, you know, by our professionals, so.
So Attorney Day, do we need a motion to table this?
Yeah, my preference would be a motion to postpone, to the extent that you do want to come right back to the board as a whole. If you want to send it to a committee, then the appropriate motion would be to send it to a specific.
Got it. So I'll make a motion to postpone this item for, item for the over reserve surplus and have that item be directly returned to the board as a whole, regular board meeting as a whole. Does that suffice?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Just give me a second. Second.
Question. Roll call.
Trustee Harris? Trustee Montez? Trustee Sierra?
Aye.
Trustee Silver?
No.
Justice Slover?
No.
Vice President Hill?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye. Motion failed.
The motion failed.
Okay, all righty. So now, do we need to go back and need a motion to go ahead and approve it?
I'll second.
Question?
I mean, I don't have any question. Obviously, we're all gonna vote to move this forward. I just want to remind everybody. I just want to remind everyone and kind of go on record with saying that based on the last meeting and this meeting and all the meetings leading up to this meeting, that we have to have, to some extent, some professional courtesy around this horseshoe. And so what I hope that we don't start getting into the practice of doing, which based on this vote, I mean, neither here nor there at this point, I hope we don't get into the practice of politicizing every issue. And so again, while it is a no-brainer that we're all gonna vote to support this, right? The only thing that obviously the minority individual, not, or the minority voters on this board, no pun intended there, but the three trustees had just asked for was just literally a few more hours to have further discussion. And so I appreciate it, I respect the consensus of the board, and I understand that the action was taken. But I just want to go on record in saying that at some point, we do have to start exercising the courtesy of professional courtesy.
I just want to take a second and explain why, why I voted how I did was because we're asking them to, just as the chief said, all we're asking is for them to reallocate the money. They're not actually buying anything, and we can go back into executive session and decide that, well, we want them to buy something else, but all they're doing is, basically the way I look at it, is they're looking up consumer reports and figuring out what are the good, good things to buy here. And so the real action for us is, once they come in and say, hey, I want to buy this, and this, and this, we still approve that or don't approve that. So it's, it's. I think all they're doing is the research.
No, I get that. I don't want to pin a needle to the conversation, right? I get that they're just doing the research for the reason that I explained to the chief when he said that, that in the event that after we go into a discussion and this board decides to take a different direction, then we just have to start over, right? When we could have just delayed a few hours and then just took one action on it, but we're here now.
Trustee Slover?
Mr. President, I don't think there was anything political in this at all. I think it was a matter that I was satisfied with the work that had gone on to decide these are the products that we want to do to help support the issue of making sure that our parks are safe, and that I was voting because I thought I was satisfied with what I'd heard, and I don't want to delay it if we don't have to. And I'm not sure getting together and talking about it some more is gonna change too many things at all. And if we have some other things we want to do to help make the parks safe, then we can find funds to do that, you know, in some other means. And so I don't think there was anything political, at least not in my heart.
And I concur with, with trustee Slover. I mean, it's not political, it's just a difference of opinion.
Okay, all right. Roll call? There was a motion, there was a second.
Trustee Harris?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
Trustee Sierra?
Aye.
Trustee Silver?
Aye.
Trustee Slover?
Aye.
Vice President Hill?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye. Motion paused. Oh, we have some calendar of consent items. Anybody want to talk about anyone or anybody in agreement with them?
President Johnson, I'll move to approve 10A through, oh.
I would like to pull 10A off.
10A?
I'll move to approve 10B and 10C.
Question? Roll call?
Aye.
Trustee Silver?
Aye.
Trust, sorry, trustee Slover?
Aye.
Vice President Hill?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
No, you tell, I made the motion, so I agree.
So I apologize.
I've talked enough.
Trustee Sierra? Thank you, thank you, and I apologize.
Trustee Harris?
Yeah, Becky, I just wanted to be able to highlight this by pulling it out. I think it's really extraordinary that we are taking this first step. And if you could just sort of explain how the, will we own the solar array immediately? Because when we did what's on here, it was a longer-term contract and that sort of thing.
Yes, the solar panels that we're planning to put on the Glen Oak Service Building will be ours. We will own them. Partial funding is coming through that grant. It is the energy transition grant. And the electricity that we produce will help power the little electric train, as well as the service building and the hay shed that's right there.
Do you have like a percentage of offset that will be for the utility? And will it provide all of the electricity to charge the train?
It should provide adequate electricity for all of those uses.
And is there a battery backup or?
No, no battery with this system.
I will move to adopt.
I have a follow-up question on the solar panels. If you're able to generate more electricity than what you use, can you sell, can you sell it back to Ameren and get credit?
Yes, it'll go back to the, through the meter, correct.
So you don't need a battery then? You can use Ameren as your back?
Something like that, yes.
Well, not if the power goes out.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, that's, the batteries for the, yeah. And also, because I think the, the, what we get for return of reselling is, that changes soon.
It's less.
So it's gonna be less, less of an incentive.
It's not one for one.
Yeah, Ameren, yeah.
It was, but it changed, or it will be changing soon.
It will be changing, maybe sometime this year or next year. Net metering.
Correct. But it's still a positive thing even for the community, even if we don't get to totally gain on it.
I'd like to second the congratulations on getting solar panels as well.
Can you second the motion too?
Thank you.
Okay, we had a motion. And we had a second. Question? Roll call.
Trustee Harris?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
Trustee Sierra?
Aye.
Trustee Silver?
Aye.
Trustee Slover?
Aye.
Vice President Hill?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye. Motion paused. Any pending business?
President Johnson, if you're fine, can we go back to the meeting minutes?
Yes, I, yeah.
Okay, so I have two corrections, both on page three. So it will be the last sentence of the one, third paragraph on page three, after the comma where it said. After the comma where it said suggest, without me having to read the rest, it says respect.
Wait, paragraph?
Paragraph three on page three.
If I went to the top of the page?
The last.
Okay, gotcha.
Where it says suggest, and then everything in between that, and then it ends with respect. I had said disrespect. I just want that to be reflected. And then on, in that next paragraph, the first sentence, I think this is just a point of correction, and this was Trustee Slover, so correct me if I'm wrong, but it says, "Trustee Slover stated that there is no need for cooperating evidence." I think we meant to put, yep, if there is.
There, that's what I was.
Yep, that if there is no need. So those are just my two corrections. And if so it sounds like we're all squared away, so I'll move to approve those minutes pending those two corrections.
I'll second.
Question? Roll call.
Trustee Harris?
Hi.
Trustee Montez?
Hi.
Trustee Sierra?
Hi.
Trustee Silver?
Hi.
Trustee Slover?
Hi.
Vice President Hill?
Hi.
President Johnson?
Hi. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, do you have any pending business? Communication, anyone? Other business?
President Johnson, I'm sorry, I do have one item of other business I mentioned in strategy. If I can address the Fiesta Ela Rio situation or activity that had occurred. I went ahead and typed up a statement just to make sure that I'm capturing everything, so just bear with me as I read it. On June 25th, leaders of Peoria's Hispanic community came to the Peoria Park District with two clear thoughtful requests. First, to cancel the 2025 Fiesta Ela Rio event, and second, to do so quietly without public comment to avoid creating division or drawing attention to an already sensitive issue. The Park District agreed to honor those requests initially. Unfortunately, that initial commitment was not upheld. After the Peoria Journal Star published an article listing upcoming events, which included Fiesta Ela Rio, staff reached out to correct the record. In doing so, the district issued a public statement that read the following. "After careful consideration, the Peoria Park District has made difficult decision to cancel the 2025 Fiesta Ela Rio event due to the current political climate surrounding immigration. That response was not only public, it also named immigration and politics as the reason for cancellation, which was not agreed upon, nor was it cleared with at least the same community members who made the initial request of us. As a result, this was a failure of process communication and trust, and that failure had real consequences. Our comments sparked confusion, incited fear, and created an environment where hatred was embodied. Community members who asked us for discretion are now carrying the weight of a public controversy they sought to avoid. That is not only disappointing, but harmful. And I think we should do better. So as a result of this, I'm asking for three things. I'm asking for a review of our internal policies or practices as it pertains to responding to sensitive issues like this. I'm asking for some corrective action, and I'm also asking for some collective community healing. As it pertains to the first one, I believe that we should have a full review of the internal decision-making process and communication breakdown that led up to the release of the public comment without community approval. I do want to say on the record, I've had that conversation with Emily, and Emily has not only acknowledged that, but has committed to doing that. The third, the second thing that I want to ask for is for us, and I think we may be doing this with Brianna, our Director of Equity and Inclusion, for us to consider some sort of mandatory training that all staff involved in external communications, particularly when those communications intersect with culturally sensitive topics, consider. And this includes addressing protocols and consulting impacted community leaders before any public responses issued. And the third thing is a commitment that I've already started working on, but I really want to work on with this full board, which is for us to work with the Hispanic community and the leaders to schedule some sort of dialogue, to listen, rebuild trust, and ensure that they request and respect and perspectives are heard and adhered to. This is about restoring relationships that we unfortunately damaged. And lastly, I think we all can agree that we remain committed to standing with, not speaking over, and serving alongside the communities that have put us in these seats by ending with, "I do believe that we can rebuild stronger, but we have to rebuild nonetheless." Thank you, President Johnson.
Okay. I won't go into a discussion on that. There are some things that I do disagree with, but we will, we'll discuss that. Okay. Any other business? Action steps, reviews?
President Johnson, the only things that I ask for as action step reviews are my three requests that I made in my statement just now, which is a review of the internal processes as it relates to pushing out public responses and us as a board figuring out how we have some collective dialogue with the same leaders of the Hispanic community who made the original request of us.
What information? Would that go through strategy?
Yeah, I'm fine wherever that lives.
It should go through strategy. That should go, yeah. Because there's some, I'm not going to go through it now on the floor, but there's a lot of things in that, in that I'm not, I don't agree with, but we can discuss that. Okay. All right. I guess anything else? Anybody got any other questions, any other concerns? We have quite a bit on our plate. Park District, but we are, we do have to keep in mind that we are the Peoria Park District. We are the oldest and number one park district in Illinois. Quite a, we have a great staff that does a lot of work beyond what the public sees. I just want that to be known. I'm saying it publicly, because you do, you do a lot. And we have a lot of challenges, but at the end of the day, we're still a great park district. All righty. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Harris?
Hi.
Trustee Montez?
Hi.
Trustee Sierra?
Hi.
Trustee Silver?
Hi.
Trustee Slover?
Hi.
Vice President Hill?
Hi.
President Johnson?
Hi.